Welcome to the Bossier City Council Regular Meeting, Tuesday, October 6, 2020. We'll have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember David Montgomery Jr. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord, and for all the blessings that you've bestowed on our community. Lord, we pray for those in our nation affected by the virus, Lord, those affected by the fires out west and the hurricanes, Lord. Lord, we pray for our protection from the hurricanes currently in the Gulf. And we pray, Lord, for wisdom for our nation and for our state and for us in this council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please face the flag and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Larkin.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mr. Darby. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
All present.
Need a motion to approve the minutes September 22, 2020, regular council meeting in dispense with the reading.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
No add-ons.
No, sir, but I do have a statement to read.
Yes, ma'am.
In accordance with Louisiana Rev. Statute 42:19 and the Attorney General's Open Meetings Guidance, in order to meet quorum requirements, some Bossier City Council members may be involved in the meeting via telephone or video conference. If anyone is uncomfortable in coming to this meeting, they are welcome to call 318-549-4595 at this time for public comments on any agenda item in accordance with recently passed Act 302. You must state your name and address for the record, and you will be limited to three minutes for your comments. We will allow five for an item and five against an item in accordance with adopted city council meeting rules. Please remember that this is not a question-and-answer session and that you must speak clearly and slowly so that we can understand you. Please no foul language, or the call will be disconnected and you will forfeit your right to speak.
There are no virtual public comments.
All right.
Need to approve the agenda.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Okay, I put the thing there for you.
Do you announce me or do I announce myself?
We have a council presentation to the Bossier City Fire and Bossier City Police Departments. Can you guys, gentlemen, step forward? Chief McWilliams, Chief Sagon, Mayor Walker.
Wanted to be able to, where everybody can see.
It's up to you totally, up to you all. Come on back here.
Come on back here. First time we've done this, so.
Yes.
Do you want to move the easel over?
Maybe I'll bend and jiggle.
All right, I guess. Everybody can, can you hear me? Okay? This is very important to us on the Bossier City Council, as well as the citizens of Bossier City. Back on July 7, we passed a resolution backing not only our police back in the blue, but also our first responders, the fire department and the EMS, which we call backing the red. So at that time, we passed a resolution unanimously, which I'll read here today. A resolution commending Bossier City Police, first, fire first responders for carrying out essential tasks during the unprecedented time of crisis created by COVID-19 and civil unrest. Whereas the Bossier City Police and Fire Department serve the citizens and have shown bravery and courage by putting themselves at risk while dealing with the public during the COVID-19 and at a time of civil unrest. Whereas the first responders daily serve to protect the citizens of Bossier City and ensure that our community is protected from any issue that may put the public at risk. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Bossier City in regular session convened, does hereby recognize and commend all members of the Bossier City Police and Fire Departments for their professionalism, their vigilance, their self-sacrifice, and carrying out the most essential task during this unprecedented time of crisis created by COVID-19 and civil unrest. The above and foregoing resolution was read in full and had opened in legal session convened, was on the motion of Mr. Jeff Free and seconded by Mr. Thomas Harvey, and was adopted on the 7th day of July 2020 by unanimous vote. It's by on this day, we thought it necessary to bring it to the public's attention and proudly present one of these resolutions in each the Fire Department, the Police Department, and the Mayor's Office, and here at the City Council Office. And gentlemen, I think, is it okay to shake hands, or do we? All right, and I'll put my mask back on, and I'll grab that one if we could get a picture for the media and social workers. Phil, I don't want to drop it.
By all means, please don't drop it.
Let Phil drop it for you.
Let me drop it again.
Mr. Larkin in the.
Does counsel want to come down and join?
Yeah. All right, y'all standing there. I just want to make sure everybody's in it.
Mr. Larkin. Mr. Larkin's moving this way.
All right, thank you all very much.
Were you smiling?
Yes.
Is that from my office, David?
Can you get that, Mayor?
David, is that from my office?
We'll get you one.
I didn't know that either.
That was too much togetherness.
Whatever.
All right, unfinished business?
Adopt an ordinance to adopt the general fund budget for 2021, final reading.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, just. I'd like to amend the 2021 general fund budget to increase the City Council Office budget by $3,066.25 to cover a salary increase of $2,500 for the city clerk due to the increased job duties.
Need a second?
Yes.
Second.
All right, then motions to amend the general fund budget. Correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. We have any questions from the audience regarding this amendment? Further discussion from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to also reintroduce the 2020 general fund budget as amended.
I'll second that. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Adopt an ordinance to adopt the water and sewer fund budgets for 2021.
Second.
Mr. Williams.
We're gonna put them together?
That's the next one, isn't it? Okay, I'm sorry. I want to make a motion to combine the budget items number two through 19 on the agenda.
Mr. Larkin, do you still second that?
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt the 2021 operating in capital budgets.
So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Was that someone, or?
I'm not sure.
Said to restart to install the latest Windows updates. I'm going to pass. All right, well, I guess that adjourns the meeting, so we got to shut down for a Windows update.
I would delay that motion.
It didn't get a second.
I have a motion by Mr. Larkin and a second by Mr. Irwin.
All right, to approve two through 19, correct?
Yes, sir.
Questions from the audience? I believe I asked that, and Windows responded, so. Any other response? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. So that brings us to item number 20 on the agenda. Adopt an ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the City of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need and provide for donation to the Turkey Creek Police Department in accordance with law, final reading.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $22,888, I'm sorry, $22,880 from the Plantation Drive Waterline Project to reimburse Dr. J. Turner to the funds expended to extend an existing eight-inch water main to the east side of his property with a fire hydrant. That's final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to authorize the mayor to execute an act of donation to accept a certain tract of land on Viking Drive owned by the Bossier Parish Police Jury, final reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to fund Gay Street Pump Bypass at a cost of $20,000 to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund, final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance number, ordinance chapter six, section six dash one, number 22 of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances to amend the description of the Festival Plaza region to enlarge the area included, final reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance chapter six, section six dash one, number 22 of the Bossier City Code of Ordinances to amend the description of Festival Plaza region, final reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance approving the attached Cooperative Endeavor Agreement by and among the Red River Waterway District, the City of Bossier City, and the City of Shreveport for the installation of a programmable LED light system on the Texas Street Bridge and authorizing Mayor Lorenz Walker to execute the same, final reading.
So move.
Second.
Mr. President, I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir. You want me to ask the audience first if they have?
Go ahead.
Any questions from the audience regarding this issue? All right, discussion from the council?
Pam, will you, let me come up, let me ask a couple of questions. I'm going to take my mask off. This was a packet that y'all made up for the proposal.
Yes, sir.
The project, and for the people on the, the project, what we're talking about is the relighting of the Texas Street Bridge with programmable LED lights. You know, what's, what I didn't like, what, it was kind of sad that the council, we didn't get this packet. This is a nice book. Let me tell you, this is a nice, nice proposal. Counsel didn't know anything about this, didn't get the book, didn't, you know, we had a CEA drop in our lap a couple of weeks ago that we had to vote on, the introduction. But I think that the project of that, this is going to be a big project, you know, that we should have been included. So I guess I'm asking you why we wasn't included in it.
Well, I apologize you weren't included in the packet. Pam Adgerson prepared those packets, and they were presented to the Waterway Commission at those meetings soliciting those funds. This process started pre-COVID, back in February, and Mayor Walker was aware of the project, and I believe, I thought he had discussed it with a few of you at that time. It just lay dormant for a few months, and then we picked it back up once we could begin discussion. But I do apologize you did not get the packet, sir. But since they were soliciting funds from them, that packet went to them.
Yeah. It's not, I mean, I'm going to say, I'm not, they can speak for themselves. I didn't know nothing about the project, you know, until we saw the CEA two weeks ago to vote on that. You know, and I talked to a couple of other people. Nobody seemed like they knew about it. You know, I seen the, your, we did the presentation to the Red River Waterway Commission, and then they asked you some, I guess, how the Shreveport and Bossier City participating. You know, it just, I don't know, Pam, it's just, just not right. You know, it says in here, different places that, you know, Shreveport's going to do this, Shreveport will have the responsibility to maintain the lights. You know, they'll, they'll make up any gaps in funding, yada, yada, yada. You know, Bossier City wasn't involved in that, which is great, you know. Then I see it's in a nice little, nice little paper here, you know, with the Texas Street Bridge to be lit up again. I didn't even see that. Maybe I don't get it out enough. Maybe it was a COVID-19 thing. I don't know. You know, I know, I know y'all say the lights are guaranteed for five years. You never know what light's going to do. I mean, we never know that. And then we're responsible for the next 15 years. This is just in my opinion, you know, that I think this is a financial liability to the city. I mean, because we, this is an unknown, what it's going to cost us in the future. And like I said, just to let you know, that's for that reason, that's why I'm not going to support it.
Yes, sir. Well, I do apologize that you, y'all did not receive the packet. Frankly, didn't, we weren't soliciting funds from the council, so we didn't, she did not prepare those packets. Overall, the project is a great economic development project for the two communities, is what we felt, and I felt personally, that it helped unite the two communities, and I think that was the spirit that the application was brought to both the Public Service Commissioner Foster Campbell and also to the Waterway Commission to solicit for those funds, that would help reunite and give us that synergy of a focus of a, of a lighted LED bridge. Some of the best lighting in the country and the world would be placed on that, on that bridge. And fortunately, they were able to secure a private donor to put the lights on, to buy the lighting. These monies that were solicited from the Waterway Commission and the Public Service Commission would be used for the installation, using the resources of Shreveport to solicit those bids and go through all the fair share programs that were required by Shreveport. There was no, you know, malintent there. From the Bossier side, we just participated as the good faith and the goodwill of Bossier was there, which I hoped and I tried to represent.
Well, again, in the agreement, though, Bossier's not listed in here, in the packet, in the letters y'all sent or in the letters y'all responded to, but it's listed in, if you see an agreement, it's listed in the agreement that we will maintain, you know, after the five years, Bossier and Shreveport. That's what concerns me.
Well, we currently maintain it now.
Say again?
We maintain the lighting on the bridge now in a partnership.
Well, these are, these are new lights, and they're going to be for another 15 years after the, after the warranty period. So again, we don't know what's going to happen with these lights. You know, that's why I think it's a liability to the city, and it's something that we don't know. It's unknown.
Well, yes, sir, that's your opinion. The LED is some of the best, best lighting in the world. We're changing the LED lighting on all our public roadways here. The lifespan of LED is, is, you know, much longer. These do come with a five-year warranty, so that first five years is covered. And not to argue with you, but there is, there's an argument that there could not be any maintenance involved. We don't know that.
Exactly.
I'd care to speak on it as well. I, and I, I guess I would start, I wouldn't want my comments to come across as something that is opposed to this. I would want my comments to come across as, as being opposed to this particular way of doing this. And so, and I won't get into all the details because there's just a lot of them. But I would start by saying that I, you know, I, I think that it's admirable that the two mayors and, and their organizations came together with the two arts departments and, and one, saw an opportunity, two, got together and took on the initiative of proposing something to do here. And then, and, and like all things that are conceived and organized, they, they've reached the point where they, where they're looking for approval of the idea and the financing that goes with it. And, and had it not been for, one, just, just, and I, I think I'll take as much blame as anybody else. I guess I should have made myself, I should have known about the mechanics of how it was organized and been able to get these, there's a couple of letters here that kind of organized it in the minds of others that have participated. And so, after I read over what the details are of what is being proposed, I came to the conclusion that I couldn't be in support of this particular way of doing it. And, and I read the legislation that we have before us very carefully, and I don't see a way to patch this up without just voting for it or voting against it. I'm seeing modifying it, particularly at this meeting right here. But what, what I, what I would like to say is, one, this, this is, this is a perfect opportunity to do something together, because, you know, the, the bridge needs to be lit up. No duh. So, so one way or another, you're going to light the bridge and just go put some streetlights on it or whatever. Or we could go to, to artistically do things as, as technically involved as this is, or something perhaps that, that is, is, that wins the approval of the council and, and the group. And I, I, looking back, I'll, I'll, I'll bet that you might agree with me that in hindsight, the ideal way to have done this would have been to maybe introduce the concept, then, and I see we spent $27,000 already designing something, so in that expenditure of $27,000, probably would have been a good idea to have a video explanation of the entire thing and how it might work and how, how it would look in, in other places that it's done, a lot of which I see written here in text. And then presented that to the council, and I think probably what would have happened is, is everybody would have got it, everybody would have seen what it was, and then they would be voting for accepting that as it's going to be or not. And I'll just go to the end of that. Had I seen all that, I would not be voting for it. I would be, I would be trying to become a part of, perhaps, taking another look at this effort and simplifying some of the things and ending up with achieving the goal of doing something together because that's what's in order with a bridge that joins two cities. Finding a, perhaps, a, a, an idea and a concept that doesn't, and doesn't have quite so many working parts of this. And then finally, I would, I'd be more likely to support something that had a. And then finally, I would, I'd be more likely to support something that had a timeline on it that was more near-term, a 10-year timeline or a 15-year. But 25 years from now, on a, on an electronic, put together like this, in 25 years, it'll probably be so, it'll probably be ridiculous 25 years from now, just like if you look back 25, whatever, incandescent lights look ridiculous. So, so I, I wondered about one other thing that I'll say here, you know, again, just to share, is that I wondered if the council in Shreveport was in a, what kind of mode were they in, just generally speaking? Because they didn't have any idea. And I see ours is, is, is less than fully informed. And so I, I just called one of the councilmen over there, I don't think I'll say who it was, because that'll turn into a controversy. But I just asked him, I said, have y'all, you know, have y'all been briefed on this thoroughly? And the particular one that I talked to said that they had not, wasn't predisposed to be against it or for it, just kind of in a, in a undecided mode. And when I discussed two or three things with him, I realized that he too had not seen those things. And after hearing that and posing a few questions, well, it, it looks as though it's gonna be appropriate for them to at least get a good briefing. And I'm not speaking for them, but, but I suspect that, that a briefing and a, and a get on board with them is gonna be necessary to, to adopt this together. So I just, I'll, I'll end what I had to say by this. I, I won't be voting for this, to adopt this ordinance. But I'll be hoping that, that no one would take that as a, even remotely against the idea of joining together, coming up with a great-looking bridge that, that, that might not be, might not have so many activities and things that are dependent on it, and, and ending up with something that we as two cities could join together and be real proud of and, and afford. So, so that concludes what I wanted to say.
Yes, sir. Could I, could I ask this? You know, with the COVID, we have eliminated our agenda meetings where I could have had that opportunity. And I do have a video I'd love to share with you, but we didn't have that opportunity to have that meeting with you. Could I ask for a delay of your vote today to allow us to put that video together in a packet for you all to get better informed on this?
Well.
I'll respond, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll, here's, here's, I thought that through. I thought, you know, we, we could substitute a motion, let's delay action on this ordinance. And I, in the end, I know I would not ever vote for that ordinance with these things and the representations that have been made to others. I, I read the representations that went to the Waterway Committee, I read the representations that went to the Shreveport side of things. And I, those things, I don't believe are practical and sustainable. And for that reason, I wouldn't be supportive of them. But I don't believe in them, I believe, I like the ideas and all that, but I don't believe in those. And so I would, I would not ever vote for this one.
Yes, sir.
But I'd, I'd vote for a new one that was, that employed some of the thinking that I, you know, just some pre-thinking that I had on my own.
Well, I don't know if I'm out of order on asking this, but if we, if we tabled this, this item as it's written, understand, understand what you're saying, sir. And perhaps we do have a workshop where we can show you the video, present this information to you, then gather those ideas that you're talking about, so we know what you're looking at. And then we can go back to the Waterway Commission, and if Shreveport has concerns as well, all these ideas are shared on a piece of paper and we can present them to the, to the Waterway Commission and say, here's what we would like to have in our agreement. Until we have that, that talk, I don't know what you're looking at.
So here's what I'm supportive of, anything that the council votes on that wants, wants to otherwise indicate to the public and perpetuate the idea of doing this, no matter what it might be. If it's appropriate to, to table this until we reconfigure it, I, I'm not at all opposed to that, you know? If it, if that, if that advances interest, then so be it.
Well, as a point of clarification, first and foremost, this ordinance is asking the council to encumber an unknown liability, albeit maybe a dollar, which anytime you spend money, it has to come before the council for approval, that's per our charter. So you are asking for money, and therefore it is appropriate that that request be made. And then especially in an unknown liability, I would think that you would come to the council. And I know that we've had COVID and so forth, but we can certainly, the administration email fill us and set up Zoom meetings for presentations. That's an alternative that has been used quite frequently. But the council's always available for you.
Yes, sir.
And the mayor to make a presentation, all you have to do is ask. So I want to make that clear.
Yes, sir, and I apologize that, that has not taken place until now, I do apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt, sir.
Well, I just wanted for the record, you know, to make that clear. The second thing is that, given the current form, it's, in my opinion, that we need to start over with this process. And you get the information you need, and the city council of Shreveport gets the information they need. And then y'all put your heads together and take the thoughts from both city councils and both governments, and come up with a, a new plan of action and a new agreement that we all can come to terms with.
Yes, sir, I believe we're saying the same thing, Mr. Montgomery.
Well, but I'm not for continuing. I think that, given its form and both Councilman Williams and Councilman Larkin's comments, it's too much to change to try to continue. I think we need to go back to the drawing board.
Yes, sir.
And get all of our thoughts together and then present something that's workable between the two cities.
We can do that, and as you said, we can set either a Zoom or in-person workshop, whatever, whatever we choose.
The council is certainly here and available for y'all's presentation, always. Any further discussion from the council?
I've got one question, and I, no, not for you, Pam, for, I've got one question I'd like to ask Mr. Jones, as he's on that commission. Thank you, Pam. I saw him come in here.
Yes, sir. David Jones, Bossier member, Red River Waterway Commission. Yes, sir.
What would happen if there was a significant failure?
I want to take this mask off, I make sure.
Hey, I'm gonna ask you through the, yeah, that's fine.
You'll be sued. A CEA is gonna have to be in place in some form or fashion, whether you like this one or you like the next one. If we're given a project and it's vetted and it's funded, our purpose is through. Relationships between governmental entities, that all happens here and over there. Once we vote to fund it, all we have to do is make sure that we disperse the money legally and that the seven-member parishes, the citizens of those parishes, get the project as it was presented to us. We have a dutyary responsibility to make sure that we get our money back if something goes catastrophically wrong. In all, in all honesty, if the lights burned 15, 16, 17 years, first of all, I won't be there. I know, well, anybody that's there won't be there, but it's quite likely it wouldn't be acted on. But if it goes six years, a year after the warranty, you're gonna be sued. And we're gonna collectively sue everybody involved on that CEA. And we're gonna let y'all figure out between yourselves who's gonna pay, because we're just gonna grab everybody. And that's how that kind of goes. We're doing it right now at Central Louisiana Port. We gave a company a million aid, and they closed the divorce and didn't provide anything they had promised in the vetting process, and we're suing them. So that's what, does that answer your question?
Yeah, David, I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Good to have you back. All right, is there any further discussion? Any other discussion from the audience?
Well, I'd just like to close, want to just say that, that again, I, I won't be voting for this, but I, I hope that the message that leaves here and goes over to the city of Shreveport is that we would like to find a way to cooperate and light the bridge, because we know it needs doing, and to make something that is just really, an extraordinarily sophisticated expression and design in doing it. I just, after having understood and read everything here, I believe this is not a sustainable way of doing that. Thank you.
Mr. President, two weeks ago, I voiced my concern over this, so I won't repeat those concerns. The Cooperative Endeavor Agreement that we've been asked to approve, I voted no on, two weeks ago. I'm gonna vote no again. And it's not because I'm not for the, for the project. It's for us assuming 50% of a financial obligation if this thing was to fail, with actually very little involvement in the operation of it on a daily or annual basis. I mean, we, we're also in this agreement where we're agreeing that we're gonna fund through the Bossier Arts Council, produce six Red River Glow Festivals at $20,000 apiece. So there's an additional $120,000 a year that we're gonna be required to, to, to come up with on this. So there's a lot of questions with this. And I, I do think that we can come to better agreement with, with Shreveport on, on our involvement with this. But yes, I'd like to see us get involved in this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Any further discussion? All right, gentlemen, please cast your vote.
Motion was defeated. Adopting ordinance to re-appropriate $171,900 from the ordinance 73 of 2020, the police building and public works complex projects to ordinance 72 of 2020, the CenturyLink Center lighting project. Final reading.
Shall I move?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to conduct repairs to the Shed Road and Meadowview Drive Gravity Main at a cost of $459,000, to come from the Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund, final reading.
Shall I move?
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business, hearing of appeal for Ramona Thomas, 405 Kelly Street, Bossier City, Louisiana, for violation of city ordinance section 14, vicious and dangerous dog ordinance.
Good afternoon, counsel. We were called to assist the Bossier City Police Department on September the 14th at approximately 11:15 a.m. A copy of the Bossier City Police Department event report was in your packet. The police department saw a gray and white pit bull named Rocky roam in the streets. The complainant, Stevie Adams, who lives at 410 Yarborough, told the officer she heard the dogs barking and fighting in her backyard. She said she saw Rocky and her dog fighting, and three of their dogs were there also. She went to, to break up the fight when the dogs jumped the fence, but before Rocky left, he picked up her dog, excuse me, she picked up her kitten in his mouth and killed it. As you can see, there are some pictures of the kitten. Our, our animal control officer arrived on scene and gathered the information she needed, seized Rocky, picked up the deceased kitten, and transported them to the, to the shelter. Ms. Thomas was, she called our office later on that day, and we explained to her what had happened and that we picked up Rocky. So what we're asking is that the council uphold our, our declaration based on violations of the city ordinance, which states under definitions 1461, a vicious dog, I mean, a dog which has, number two, previously been classified as dangerous, and subsequent thereto, a violation of subsection 1464 has occurred. Well, Rocky was deemed dangerous before, on March 6th, 2018. And apparently, he got out and was, bit a person who had another dog in her, in her arms. Also, a violation of the ordinance, the dangerous dog ordinance was violated, number, on 1464, on April the 2nd, 2019. And it states, "A collar provided by Bossier City Animal Control shall be purchased and affixed to the dog to be worn at all times." And you can see there's a picture of the dog in her yard without the dangerous dog collar on. That's a violation of the, of the vicious dog. Our animal control officer at the time seized Rocky for the violation, but we were lenient with her. We could have deemed the dog vicious for breaking the, the ordinance as it states, but we were lenient since it was in its, in its enclosure and just didn't have its collar on. We made her pay her fine, we seized it, made her pay her fine, and gave the dog back. This time, there were several violations that occurred of section 1464, number B4, which states, "A dangerous dog must be securely confined indoors or in a securely fenced enclosure and lock pin or structure suitable to prevent the dog from coming into contact with either a human being or other, other than the owner or any other animal, and designed to prevent the animal from escaping." Well, the dog was loose, and in somebody else's yard. Also, section 1464B, which states, "A dangerous dog may be off the owner's premises or out of its enclosure only if it is muzzled and restrained by substantial chain or leash, not exceeding four feet in length and under control of an adult." Well, it was running at large in somebody else's backyard, and out on the street, police, police officer saw it. It also violated section 1481 for not having a rabies tag, and also 1461 by attacking and hurting another domestic animal. That's our case, thank you. Ms. Thomas is here, she can, happy to give her side of story.
Mr. Thomas? Could you please state your name and address, please?
My name is Ramona Thomas, I live at 405 Kelly Street, Bossier City, Louisiana. This is my daughter, Jocazia Means. She also resides, we reside at the same residence. I'm not, I wasn't there to witness all of that, I just, I was just notified about it. But I want to go all the way back to when my first, when my dog was first, when they first said he was a dangerous dog. The guy that they said that he bit or scratched, I'm not sure, they're saying he bit him. This guy never did go get a, didn't go get a technical shot, no ambulance was called for him. It was just, I think, I think his puppy that he had in his arms just gave him a little scratch on the wrist. I have pictures of my dog, and it's, it's one of the officers that's out here also. He's not, he's, he's not a bad dog. I've been had him since he was a puppy, you know, and I understand that y'all have, y'all have. I'm sorry, I understand that, that there are rules. But there are other dogs that are in my yard that got, opened up the gate. My husband, he secured that gate, they broke it, they got out. He ended up getting out, he's a house dog, he beats in the house with us all the time. Do y'all? Do y'all want? He got out.
Phyllis, do you need to get those, please?
He got out, and I just don't feel like my dog had, I, I, I just can't see him killing no cat. Now, those other dogs, they're wild, that's the reason why they're outside of my, outside of my house, they're not allowed inside the house at all. We don't allow those dogs inside the house, you know? I can't give a hug cat back. But I just ask y'all, please, don't let them kill my dog. Please, I just, I want my dog back, please.
Yes. You can come to the mic, please, and you can take your mask if you.
We've had Rocky since he was eight weeks old, and me personally, I have been around him since he was a puppy, and I know Rocky, and I know that my dog doesn't chase cats, he doesn't affiliate with cats, period. He's been a house dog since we had him. We don't take him for walks, we don't take him outside. The only time Rocky goes outside is to use the bathroom, and we let him back in. The other dogs that we have in our yard, they're outside dogs. Rocky is the only house dog that we have right now, currently, and this is the second time that they have labeled our dog as vicious. And every time someone comes to the house, someone comes to visit, Rocky doesn't jump, he doesn't bite, nor scratch.
He comes in.
He is super friendly, sweet, caring, and a loving animal, and I would hate to see my dog killed for no reason. And I understand that a cat was killed, but I truly believe that another dog killed the cat because.
It was the other dogs.
My dog doesn't chase cats, you know, he's super friendly, like, he, he can make friends with any dog or any human being, like, he's not vicious. He's not vicious at all. And when they detained Rocky and they had to get him, he jumped right into the van. There was, they didn't have to tussle or fight with him for him to get in the van, he went straight into the van. And I believe that the other dogs in my yard probably had something to do with it, but Rocky, he doesn't bother any other animals around the neighborhood, and everyone knows our dog, and he, and they know that Rocky is the kindest dog that they have met ever. And he's like a sweet pit bull.
When he's out there.
He doesn't bother any kids, any children, babies, nothing.
Thing is, this right here, I know that they stopped and got him for not having a collar on, get those papers, Kayce. I know they stopped, they, they picked him up one day for not having his collar on. I had just bathed him, I let him outside, and I did pay my fine, I did all of that, you know, and he's, he's been there now for over two, uh, something weeks. And, you know, this is just, it's really hard for me because he's a house dog, but I just, you know, I, I just truly believe that my other dogs, they are, they are terrible. I had to call, the dog pound came out one time and had to take another dog out my yard that belongs to my, my husband. We had to get rid of him because he was barking so bad, he was barking and vicious towards us. We couldn't even walk up in our yard without the dog barking. But Rocky is a house dog, he be in the house.
They're a mixed breed as well, they're a mixed breed.
They're mixed breed dogs.
German Shepherd and pit bull mixed together.
Yes.
You know, I, I apologize, you know, I don't, I don't even know who the lady is, I didn't know none of that, you know, I, 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 I really apologize for the little kitten, I do, even on behalf of those other dogs, you know. I just ask y'all, please, just give me, just give us one more chance, please, for my dog.
Any questions from the council?
I, I just wanna talk to Ms. Thomas for just a minute to hear about this. I wanna make sure I understand the sequence of, of your dog getting to where it, it, it is today. Back in February of two thousand and eighteen, so this is over two years ago.
Yes, sir.
Your dog got out, attacked an individual that was walking his puppy or walking another dog, and ended up, according to our paperwork and what we're looking at, it ended up biting the, the individual that was walking his dog. He was on his way to Maggio's.
Yes, yes, sir. And, 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 and my dog was just a puppy. He was actually, he seen that the guy had his dog, and, I mean, I, I, he wasn't growling, rrrr, he wasn't doing none of that, he was just jumping, you know, just jumping up, you know, just trying to, because it was another dog there.
Right.
I believe that my dog was in heat at the time. He had, you know, he was a puppy, uh, he was about this here big tall, he wasn't, he wasn't very big then. Uh-huh, and, and I, I think he was just, he wasn't growling or anything, because, you know, we walked him up there to Maggio's store, he seen us, I mean, he has his dog there sometimes. My dog has never even tried to attack his dog.
Right.
He hasn't tried to attack anybody at the store. I, I think he just got excited because he seen the dog in the man's hands, and he was jumping up, you know, and he wasn't growling like, rrrr, he wasn't doing none of that, he wasn't aggressive, you know. And, and when we got it, got him, you know, the guy was like, get your, you know, he went, but listen, I'm like, I'm trying to, just calm down, he's not trying to hurt you, you know, and I think because the idea that him being a pit bull, most people get, you know, they get, they, some people are scared of pit bulls. He's just as gentle, he's a gentle dog. I mean, he's a house dog. I don't, I don't have him out there where he's fighting other dogs, stuff like that, there's none of that. He's just my baby.
And, and I understand that, I have big dogs, I have Rhodesian Ridge Vax, one is over a hundred pounds, and I'll be walking my dog every night, and there are some people in our neighborhood that see us coming, and they don't know my dog. They don't know whether it's socialized, they don't know that it's a champion, that it's been socialized in the ring, but they'll cross over and walk on the other side of the street, just because it's a big dog. So I understand the big dog mentality, but what I'm trying to understand is what's, what's happened that there's an excuse for each incident?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the, the, the not wearing of the collar when that is very clear that that has to happen.
Yes, sir.
I understand you paid the fine and, and.
Yes, sir.
That's a responsible thing to do. But now we're dealing with a dead animal.
Yes, sir.
And I, I have a witness that puts your dog with that cat, I mean, it was the owner of the cat.
Yes, sir.
And I, I find it hard to understand how she could make that mistake of, of pointing out Rocky.
Yes.
And it not being Rocky, that it be another dog. And now, you've already implicated other dogs in your yard.
And she said that all, there was dogs all in her yard, she's trying to break them up from fighting. Now, I'm, I'm, I have, there's two dogs in my yard, it was three, because I let the dog pound come and get one, because he kept jumping the fence. There are, these dogs that I have, they jump the fence. We built an ample amount of fence for them, not Rocky, he can't even jump the fence. Now, these other dogs, they either, they gonna let their hatch up, they've been breaking the board, and, you know, my husband said he was gonna call them to come and get the dogs.
Pardon me for interrupting, but Mr. Harvey, you had a line of questioning.
Right.
And we're speaking about other dogs, the, the hearing is about this dog.
Right.
Rocky. So, we've talked.
So, I, again, you're.
Excuse me, just let me finish. So, let's stay on the line of questioning, please, and try to sum this up so we can.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand how she could have made a mistake with, with seeing your dog kill her cat, and so I, I'm just not understanding how she, how she made that mistake, so.
I think that she said she implicated that there were other dogs there, she's trying to break it up. I'm trying to figure out how you just pinpoint my dog as the one that, that killed your cat when there's, it's a yard full of dogs and you, you're distracted, you're trying to break up other dogs to fight, you know? My dog, I, I just, I, I just, I just don't, I mean, I just, I, I just don't believe that. I, I can't believe that he did that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Mr. President, I'd like to bring back Dale, Mr. Keeler up, just.
Thank y'all.
See what we need from us, which I don't believe is nothing.
Yes, sir.
So, we, like I said, we don't need a motion, we was, we do nothing, just.
Yeah, if, if you, if you want, from what I gathered, how this is supposed to work, if you want to grant her appeal, then you make a motion to grant her appeal. And if you want to keep it as it is, then there's, there will be no motion made.
Right.
I, I assume that's how it's.
We'll just close the public hearing, correct, Mr. Holmes? So, is there any further discussion?
I just wanna add, so the reason that the dog is being, the, the sequence of events was a dog was, at one time was deemed to be.
Dangerous.
Dangerous.
Yes, sir.
And the, the, the administrative step that we have after that, whatever those circumstances are.
Can we be closer to the mics, you can't hear you.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So the administrative step that occurs after that is one where the dog is then deemed to be what? What is this?
Vicious.
Vicious.
Yes, sir.
And once being deemed to be vicious, then, then, then that, there's, there's, there's nothing between those two, it's one or the other?
No, sir.
Right, good. And so the, well, go ahead.
It's pretty much up to us if we, if we're gonna deem the dog vicious. Like you said, she did have that prior infraction where she didn't have the, the dog's collar on. So, we could have deemed it vicious then for breaking the ordinance, but we were, we didn't wanna do that, weren't, we felt that she was, the dog was in its enclosure, and you just put the collar on, make sure it's on, and we pounded the dog and made her pay her fine, with the, with the, knowing that she needs to adhere to the ordinance as stated from here on out. And, but this one, there were several infractions. The dog was running at large, the dog didn't have a muzzle on, didn't have a leash, and then turned, jumped the fence and killed a cat, and, and that's why, that's why we had the demon.
And, and this, in this separate one, did the dog have the collar on?
Yes, it did.
Dangerous dog?
Yes, sir.
But, but, so it got loose?
Yes, sir. But, well, in the dangerous dog declaration, it states the dog must be securely confined indoors or in a secured fence, enclosure and lock pin or structure suitable to prevent the dog from coming into contact with either a human being other than the owner or any other animal, and designed to prevent the animal from escaping. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Any other further questions from the council? All right, Ms. Thomas, thank you all for coming very much, this public hearing's closed. I would like to let you know if you could come to the mic, please. Mr. Keeler, you wanna come to, given the outcome of this public hearing, your last course of action is to go to the twenty-sixth Judicial Court, the courthouse in Benton, am I correct? So could you help her, please, understand what her next avenue is and what the alternative?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you all for coming.
Oh, thank you.
Would you, yeah, if you could help them, let them know their next course of action, we appreciate it, thank you so much.
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bojor City which affected property, public health and safety, due to the requirement to repair a twenty-four inch Golden Meadow Force main located near the entrance of the Red River Waste Water Treatment Plant at a cost of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to come from the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund, and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Pulley Construction, Inc., for completion of work. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance, amending ordinance fifty-seven of two thousand and nineteen and one thirty-eight of two thousand and nineteen, reallocating surplus funding to be used towards the northeast waste, northeast water treatment rehabilitation and painting project. First reading.
So move. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to reappropriate two hundred thousand dollars from surplus funds in ordinance seventy-one of two thousand and nineteen and ordinance one twenty-four of two thousand and nineteen, as needed to complete the extension of Melrose Avenue to Plantation Drive. First reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Did it not come up, counsel?
Um, there it is.
There it goes.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to change the funding source of ordinance ninety-nine of two thousand and twenty from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to the two thousand and seventeen LCDA bond for landscape, for the landscaping project for the CenturyLink Center. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to authorize Mayor Lorenz J. Walker to execute an act of donation to accept a certain tract of land owned by the Young Men's Christian Association of Northwest Louisiana. First reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the city of Bojor City by annexing approximately a hundred and twenty acres zoned residential agriculture, which adjoins the current city limits of Bojor City, Louisiana. First reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a res, motion carry. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of six firefighter positions due to six retirements. First and final reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one records clerk for the Bojor City Police Department. First and final reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for Public Works to transfer an Equipment Operator One in Streets and Drainage to Street Sweeping and Grass Cutting, fill a vacant Truck Driver Position, Driver One Position, transfer a Laborer Two to Streets and Drainage from Street Sweeping and Grass Cutting, and fill a vacant position in Street Sweeping and Grass Cutting as a Laborer One. First and final reading.
So move.
Mr. President?
Second.
Yes, sir.
We, we met a while ago with, with the, with the mayor and Stacy, and, and we've come to the conclusion we wanna just continue this ordinance for, till the next meeting.
Well, the one after that, I'll be absent the next meeting.
I'll withdraw that motion.
Okay, so, let me get my calendar out here. You're gonna continue it to the seventeenth of November?
Is that the next one?
The next one's November the third, I'm looking, I'm sorry, November the third would be the second one. October twentieth is the next one.
Yeah, November third.
November third, okay.
Please.
Yeah, we'll, I'll continue until November third meeting.
That's a motion I'll second.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to hire or promote one office manager receptionist to replace a vacant position in the mayor's office. First and final reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a Recreation Maintenance Worker One for Parks and Recreation. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer for the Bojor City Police Department. First and final reading.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve a report of change order number one for the sewer sub basin B C zero four project for a decrease of four thousand five hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. Total cost of contract with change order five hundred sixty-one thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-five cents, forty-two cents, excuse me.
So move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
I guess I'm going to have to start wearing glasses.
What?
I said, I guess I'm going to have to start wearing glasses.
I think you can buy us all a pair.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order number one for the generator at the animal shelter, Public Works generators with an increase of five thousand one hundred sixty dollars for a contract price with change order two hundred thirty thousand three hundred, six hundred and sixty dollars.
So move.
Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approve report of change order number two for the Tinsley Park Expansion Project with an increase of thirteen thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars and four cents for a contract price with change order of twelve million four hundred forty-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and four cents and an additional fifty-four calendar days added to the contract time.
So move.
Second.
Windows has come to my attention again.
That's the blue screen of death.
Mind me tomorrow, is it?
Remind me.
Okay, thanks.
Cancel.
That Windows has become a participant of the people, I like that.
They're watching you.
That's for sure. Is that a camera right there?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Say hi to Bill.
I'm missing votes from Mr. Irwin and Mr. Darby.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order number two for the Hamilton Road Drainage Lift Station Project for an increase of twenty-five thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars. Total cost of contract with change order eight hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars.
So move. Second.
Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order number one for the Waller Avenue Sewer Main Project for an increase of a hundred seventy-six thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty-six cents. Total cost of contract with change order six hundred sixty-nine thousand three hundred thirty dollars and eighty-six cents.
So move.
So move. Second. Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve report of change order number five for the Bossier Animal Control Building Improvements with an increase of one thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents for a contract price with change order of one million three hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents, and with three calendar days added to the contract time.
Would it, does it have a one point five million dollar budget?
Mm-hmm. Second.
Squeak it in there.
You've got engineering fees, I think, and all that on top of it. Yes.
Hey. So we're monitoring the total project cost on that very closely. That's probably the last CO you're going to see on that, because this is about the last nickel we've got left in that project, and I've communicated that with Public Works as well, the architect and that, so forth. So, I wouldn't bring it to you if I, if I didn't have the money in there to...
Everything else is free from now on, huh?
Sir?
Everything else will be free if they have anything on.
Yeah, right, right. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ben.
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
I had a question for Mr. Thomas, that, please. I was wondering, when we tried to go online today to do our registration...
The open enrollment, yes.
Yeah, open enrollment, why was that? Is there some law or rule that says you can't start that early, given the state...
They're setting it all up right now, trying to determine on how we want to do it. They may use social security numbers as your login this time, so we can track who logs in and who doesn't log in. So we're playing with that right now, so...
Yeah, I would, just a recommendation, given the state of affairs and the leniency which is being applied to the census, voting, everything else, and stuff being virtual, that we give some leniency to our employees that are unable to attend or don't want to attend, so that we open that window up rather than just two days.
Yeah, it's for two months. The open enrollment process is two months.
So it's not just the...
No, it's just not these two days, it's till the end of November.
Good, I just wanted to make sure that, there were several people that had tried to log in.
Yeah.
All right, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right. Anything else to come before the council? Everyone have a great week.